Thank you all for being here, appreciate you being here. Paulding County Council of Commissioners September 23th Board Meeting. This is our work session. I'll thank all of our invited guests and elected officials. I'm running to see we've got our Auntie Erin, but Erin Gully. We've got Mayor Doris Debbie. Anybody else on this? Lieutenant Lee with Travis and Sanders here, thank you for being here, we appreciate you. Calling me in order to remind you to turn off all cell phones next to us and patrons if it does interrupt our production. Marshall, would you bring forth anybody willing? We have Lynn Bellini, who visits out of number four, and Delmar Cook, who visits out of number three. So, thank you all. Now for our invocation and pledge, we have Commissioner Tommy Graham. If you remember, Mike Shaley passed away and his wife worked with the Ministerial Association to bring us ministers right before this group. And with the loss of her husband, we have not lacked that you were doing that. And folks are ready to step up and do our public participation in prayers. So Commissioner Graham, would you stand with me if you're ready?
Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. Father, we thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed on us. Father, we thank you for this nation that we live in. Father, the freedoms that we have. Father, so often we take those freedoms for granted. Father, that people have fought and died for those, that people fight to protect them. We pray for those that defend that freedom for us, for our first responders, that you would protect them this day. Father, we pray for their families that sacrificed for them to serve us. Father, we pray for discernment and wisdom upon this board today as we're about the county business. Father, we thank you for the many blessings you've given us in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner Graham. Minutes, the September 9th, 2014 work session minutes and September 9th, 2014 Board Meeting Minutes are available for your review. Under the announcements, and we've talked about this for a little while, but today's the big day. The Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Fire Chief Michael Earwood and his 24 years of service. Mike, would you come forward and Chief Helfry, would you give us a few words of wisdom?
I don't know that he can really say anything good.
Got a question to give you.
Appreciate the place the fire chief was standing right there in front of the picture.
Ladies and gentlemen, Chief Earwood is retiring, of course. Friday will be his last day. He has 44 years in the fire service, 24 of that being here in Paulding County. Very proud of what he's done for the department. He's brought the fire department from an all-career fire department. He came here in 1990, 100 or so volunteers, and he was able to bring it to a career department where it is today. We have 140 career firefighters and office staff and part-timers. He built a great foundation with his leadership. Chief Earwood, right now we have 11 fire stations that we've put in place. We have another one that rolls in up later this year. He's been able to do all this with honesty and with integrity. Worked the site for 11 years, I know that. And we're just proud that he was our fire chief and we wish him the best. I know that he's got some fishing holes already picked out, about five of them, he talks about it all the time, so we know that. So, we just wish him the best and he deserves all the hackles that you can give him, so you give him the grand.
Yeah, you gotta do something to offset your ugly. Come on. Lil' wanna.
Guys, y'all gotta sign up here. You gotta have the front row. No, no, you have to pull them up. Johnny's trying to act like you're tall, you're not tall Johnny.
That's Johnny, that's not Johnny, that's John.
I think since they got married two weeks before Jane and I, is this number 43 this year? Two weeks before we got married. And they did sometime before that, so.
Three years.
Three years. Y'all need attention for Jane and I, we've been together 50 years, but that represents 43 years of marriage. Amazing. Thank you, Bob, appreciate you. The Board of Commissioners now would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Awards to Detective Sam Driscoll of the Crimes Against Children Union. And Sheriff Gully, I think you have a report after that, so. Deck, if you'll come stand up here in the front.
Good morning. Thank y'all for allowing us to do this. I'd like to introduce y'all to Detective Sammy Driscoll. I know y'all look like a community safety with high school together here, he's a graduate of Paulding County High School. When did we graduate, Sammy? Manny, son? Sammy works over at Crimes Against Children Union, he's in charge of keeping up with all of our sex offenders. He maintains a sex offender registry, Sammy does a fantastic job. He works more than he should and he goes above and beyond without being asked. Never have to ask him to do any things, he's always in the middle of what's going on and taking care of it. In 2014, he was also nominated as State Director for Sex Offender Registration, Tracking, and Monitoring Program by the Georgia Sheriff's Association. He's now in the form of contact for all Metro Atlanta for doing questions over procedures and refunding last face of probably sex offenders. He's been deemed a subject matter expert in the area of sex offender tracking and monitoring by Georgia Sheriff's Association as well. His supervisors are here in the back at Crimes Against Children Union and they recommend him for this award and I highly agree with them. Sammy, thank you for the job that you've always done and thank you for going above and beyond. And also, I've got to mention, watch the state's throw downs, they give them a receipt so he can come down, even twice, he can come down and meet dinner with them.
Are they coming in, sir, or are you mad you want to stay?
Yeah. What do you want to say?
Here's the sheriff's report now.
I put a copy of it, I think it says major through August, it's going to be January through August, we've got the number fixed up a little bit. I'll make it real quick, I know y'all got a lot going on this morning, that might just surprise us here. From January through August 2014, Sheriff's Office Patrol 1,964,000 miles. We arrested 2,539 suspects, we issued 3,100 traffic citations. We've handled right at 39,000 complaints, high-risk calls with 3,600 alarms, about 1,900 domestics, well over 1,000 lockouts. 4,227 subpoenas and civil papers have been served, we've picked up transported 421 predators. We have right at 3,000 suspicious incidents, either persons or vehicles. 2,037 theft and theft actions, burglaries, murder, and autos. We've foregone 5,584 traffic stops, we've also issued 687 DUIs this year. We cleared 2,066 warrants, conducted 365 road patrols, and had 939 juvenile incidents reported, 209 of those was assigned and 319 charged. That's the shortest week of the week.
Any questions? You got any extra time?
I'll come up with them if you need some.
Thanks for what you do.
If you don't mind me adding to it, I'd also like to give accolade to Chief Earwood. I don't know that there's anybody anywhere in the state that gets along any better than we do with our fire department. I've been on calls with them, I've been in field stuff with them. Nobody ever pulled any punches, it's all about getting the job done. My answer was to Chief Earwood, and I hope, like I said, I ask you to be the fire chief, I hope my guess is gonna work out for me.
I told you if that uniform fit you, you could have it.
I think, I don't see anything coming changing from Chief Helfry takes over. I think it's gonna be business as usual, it's always about getting the job done, taking care of our citizens and this county. Chief, I bid you farewell, I wish you both success when you retire. Joey, better sleep before next week, 'cause you're gonna sleep.
Thanks Sheriff. Invited guests, we have our superintendent of schools, Paulding County Schools, Cliff Cole, so would you come and give your report?
Good morning. Good morning, thank you for inviting me here this morning. Also like to say congratulations to Chief Earwood and say thank you for your support through the years. Congratulations, wish you well. Also, before I start my report, I'd like to say thank you Sheriff Gully and his department for their support, assistance, and guidance, especially over the past couple of days, the situation involved, involved in Paulding County High School. They've been tremendous and just wanna extend my gratitude to them. Also wanna thank, say thank you to all of our public safety personnel for their support and assistance in the active shooter drill that was completed last Monday, September 15th at North Paulding High School. Mr. Chairman, thank you for being there. It was a great learning experience for us all, so thank you very much. And again, thanks to our public safety personnel. Going over our district facts, our projected enrollment this year was 28,539 students. Our current enrollment for K-12 is 28,447 students. We do anticipate getting close to that number prior to end of the school year. We're currently the 13th largest school district in the state, we educate approximately 1.7% of all public school students in the state of Georgia. We have 3,339 employees, approximately 1,994 of those employees are your certified staff or your teaching staff. Have 254 school buses on the road each day, transporting approximately 18,000 students, traveling approximately 13,500 miles per day. Our FY fiscal year 15 general operating budget is approximately $221 million. When we looked at our 2015 budget initiatives, this year was one was to eliminate our furlough days and get back to a full academic calendar for our students. This will be the first year since 2009 the district has not had furlough days, a reduction in our employee calendar. And also, this will be the first year since 2009 that our students have been on a full 180-day academic calendar, so we're very proud of that. We also wanted to work to give our staff a cost of living adjustment. There's not been any cost of living adjustments since 2008. We were able to give them a 1.4% cost of living adjustment, and again, this is the first time since 2008. The other initiatives included reduction in class size. We have a class size waiver that's been in place since 2009, but we want to continue to work to reduce the student-to-year ratio in the district. Technology upgrades, we've done hardware upgrades, software upgrades. Each one of our schools now has a wireless access point, which we're very proud of, and we'll continue to work toward that. Another initiative for this year was professional development, and that sort of ties into the technology aspect of it. It's really getting our teachers, teaching our staff how to utilize the current technology in their lesson plans and their day-to-day involvement. Safety security is always on the forefront. We've upgraded security cameras, ZVR upgrades. We now have security vestibles in all of our schools that you have to pass through an office to get into the building. We have three additional resource officers that were hired on this year. One of the more costly but needed initiatives was a bus replacement cycle. We purchased 25 new buses for this year, we started a recycle rotation back, it's a 10-year rotation. We have not purchased those buses this year, approximately 60%, of our fleet would have been out of that 10-year rotation. We've seen our maintenance for fleet transportation continue to cost go up. We've also extended our nurses' hours from six hours to an eight-hour day, or seven and a half hour day. So we'll have a nurse there with students during the school day, so that was very positive as well. Had a couple of significant improvements, our accomplishments from last year I wanted to discuss. First, about a year ago, we went through our five-year accreditation process. We had an external review team to come in, consisting of eight people from four different states. The external review consists of review self-assessments, our documents, evidence. They visited 50 classrooms over that time, did 246 interviews, including 55 administrators, 100 teachers, 19 support staff, and 72 parents and community leaders. The district was commended in the following areas: For clearly engaging in a systematic, systemic, inclusive, and comprehensive process for assuring high expectations for all learners; For ensuring that each school and department engages in a systematic, inclusive, and comprehensive process to review, revise, and communicate the school purpose for student success; And the next couple really geared, was geared toward our Board of Education. And during their exit report, they actually said our board was a model for other districts throughout the state. Basically, they stated the Board of Education and System Leadership Team exceeded their unified approach for governing the school system in order to assure effective fulfillment of roles and responsibilities. And then also, the governing body ensured that leadership possessed the autonomy to meet achievement goals and to manage day-to-day operations effectively. Areas for improvement, both of them, or two of them, they revolved around the technology. One was to identify, implement, and evaluate non-negotiable technology instructional strategies to support curricular expectations. The other was to implement a technology plan to reduce the gap between existing technology and the technology required for students in support of the curriculum. Both of those areas we were aware of, but due to budget restrictions, our hands are somewhat tied. The other accomplishment, of course, was the Fast and Splots 5, we're very proud of that. First priority, of course, is Splots 5, is to continue to pay the bond indebtedness. This enables the district to maintain the school bond mileage rate of 0.00 through 2021, which I think that's a great benefit to our property owners. Priority two includes the purchase of band instruments for middle and high schools. We've field improved, we've completed field improvements to all the high schools, but all five of the high schools will be in that cycle. Three of the schools will get additional track enhancements. We are in the process of doing an addition at Shelton Elementary School, that's in the planning phase. And then we also, we have an addition at North Paulding High School. We're currently working with the Paulding DOT, and I like to think Scott Green and his staff, on road improvements for the north campus. We knew there was concern there, but I think Snowmageddon last year really brought that concern to everyone's forefront. So once this is complete, once we have a satisfied entrance/exit to North Paulding High School, we'll have a better timetable for that addition. Additional information on Splots projects can be found on the district website. We've worked hard over the past year and a half to really get our community more engaged with what we're doing. And I know many of you attended the educational summit in April of 2013, where Dr. Steve Dillinger from Georgia Partnership for Excellence in Education was there to talk about the impact of education on the economy. With a focus on appearance students for graduation and beyond, the district has embarked on a partnership with the Georgia Leadership Institute for School Improvement, the Georgia Partnership for Excellence in Education, and Think Gate, which is our data warehouse. Basically, the purpose of the partnership is better equip Paulding County school leaders and to increase community awareness and support for the college readiness and career preparedness for all of our students. An advisory board was appointed to provide guidance for the community engagement portion of the project. They reviewed extensive amount of data, planned two education summits, and with the feedback received, developed a community engagement plan. The plan's now being placed in the hands of the Paulding County Chamber of Commerce Workforce Development Committee for oversight, and we're very excited about that. But basically, there's three committees that have been formed to complete the planned goals. One is career exploration, and that's to increase and enhance opportunities outside of school for students to experience programs such as apprenticeship, job shadowing, mentoring, and other opportunities to explore post-secondary career options. Two is community involvement, and this is to increase and/or expand opportunities inside the school community and business leaders, as well as educators, parents, and students to experience programs such as career awareness programs, volunteer programs, and community involvement opportunities for students to explore post-secondary and career options. And three is to increase communication and community awareness of college and career readiness, specifically the importance of soft skills, post-secondary opportunities, and post-secondary planning. The three goals, their measures, progress, and resources are included on the community portal, which is found under the community tab on the district website. We hope that the community will find the information valuable as they become an engaged partner with the Paulding County School District, in meeting our college and career readiness goals for students and assisting in preparing all of our students for success in the 21st century. Just a couple other dates I wanted to bring up. We have, specifically speaking of community engagement, we have our reality fairs that are coming up, the week of October 21st, and then also one on October 28th. Now, I'll give you the specific dates there. The reality fair is where our eighth graders go to the high school, and they have booths set up, and I know some of you have participated in those before. That's a real-life experience for these students. They come in and basically, they're given a job, they're given a salary, and then they're given real-life experiences such as rent, car payment, taxes, all those things that as adults that we deal with, so that these students understand that they're making $40,000 a year, they really don't have $40,000 a year to spend. So it's a great opportunity for those students to learn and experience, and we can always use and volunteer for those events. Again, you can find it under the community port on the district website. The other event I wanted to mention is Paulding Education Foundation Extreme Family Field Day on November 8th. This is a fun event for the whole family, it starts with a 5K and fun run at 8 o'clock that morning, and then it will extend into a carnival-like atmosphere where parent and child has an opportunity to compete as a team against other families in obstacle courses and so forth. It's at Taylor Farms Park. Again, it begins at, the 5K begins at 8, and then the other competitions at 9, or the carnival rides, performances, and concessions throughout the day, so I'd like to invite you out to those events.
What was that date again?
November 8th, at Taylor Farms. Again, I'd like to, you know, thank you for your support. We hear so much about the relationship with Sheriff's Department, to the fire department, your staff here, we appreciate working with them and really relying on them for a lot of feedback to help us make our processes and proceedings better. Again, thank you for having me this morning. If you don't mind, I have the dates for Reality Fair, would I pass it out to you? And also, one of our partners in education, Members First, did a nice little calendar that has all the dates and information, I'd like to share with you as well.
Yeah, I'll be right there.
Okay. Any questions for me?
I just want to tell you how much I appreciate our monthly meetings, and there was a day in the time where a school superintendent and a board chairman could be in the same room, so I appreciate you and the courtesy you give me to meet together.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And Pat, if you would, to give those. You're gonna lead us in the 5K run, is that correct?
Well, unfortunately, I had to make a plan, I'm doing a half marathon in Nashville that morning, so. The name was changed, so, but otherwise, I would be there.
I meant to say, "half marathon." Thank you. Good job.
This is school day. We have Dr. Ryan Newcomb, President of Chattanooga Tech, to give us an update on the college. Things have changed quite a bit. I know that we have some new hope scholarship money. I served on the Student Finance Commission, and there's areas where we've got new money that some of you guys, for IT and welding and long-distance drivers. Also, Dr. Newcomb was so helpful in working with us to get a driver's license to the Bureau here and things we're going to do for some training there, so thank you for your update and thank you for being here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we do appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to make this few minutes to update you on some things. You talking about the half marathon, I promise you I would not be in that half marathon. I probably couldn't keep up to you, Mr. Chairman. I will be in a hard walk, and emphasize the walk part of the hard walk. The status of the Paulding campus is good. Depending on the semester, we have 800 to 1,000 students. That doesn't count the number of Paulding residents that are also taking courses online. In fact, our biggest campus now across the, all the campuses that make up the colleges are online campus. We've got upper 3,000, close to 4,000 students that take online classes. I'm gonna use my time here today to not go over some facts and figures, but rather to tell you about a major initiative at the college. During the merger, many years back, we merged Chattanooga Tech, North Metro Tech, and Appalachian Tech together. The emphasis, the slogan at the time was "One College, But Multiple Communities." One College, But Multiple Communities. Well, guess what we had a lot of attention on? The "One College" piece of it. Necessarily, when you're trying to merge three colleges together with eight different campuses, with eight different cultures, eight different ways of doing things, little things, trying to get all the math teachers to agree with the math book on the, we focused on centralization, on the "One College" piece of what we did. Making that worse, that need to centralize was the fact that the state was continuing to coast back year after year, so we had to be very efficient. We got kind of an entrenchment. But we're changing that, and I'm announcing a major initiative today to focus more on the community piece of that slogan. And there are three reasons for doing, three highlights of that that I want to point out. One is the program mix. If I come to you commissioners and I say, "You know what, the college has got a great program on widget making, and if you drive to East Cobb, you can do it, or you can drive to Jasper." Or if I tell the folks in Jasper, "You can drive to Dallas to get a program," then what you gonna call it? That doesn't really work, that's not really relevant to what's going on here in Paulding County. So we're examining the program mix here at the campus, and we heard a message. So, we're examining the program mix here at the campus, and we heard a message loud and clear, and the chairman just referenced it. To review just a little bit for everybody, I want to make a little add here. The Hope Scholarship goes for the two-year degree programs or four-year degree programs. But we also have certificates and diplomas that are eligible for the Hope Grant. Well, the state, the government, the General Assembly, and the Student Finance Commission, in their wisdom, came up with something called Strategic Industries Workforce Grant. And here's the way it works. If you go into one of those certificate of diploma programs, not only you get the Hope Grant that pays for about three-quarters of the tuition, not the fee, but three-quarters of the tuition, but if you go into one of those areas, such as you decided, Mr. Chairman, the state will put in extra money. What a gift to business and economic development for our community. For example, right now, you can become a truck driver because of the $1,000 that's put on top of the Hope Grant. You can become a truck driver at Chattanooga Tech in eight weeks for a cost of $70 and $150 in books. What a brilliant move to incentivize behaviors of students to choose the programs that you need to produce, workers to be competitive, the welders, for example, that you mentioned, and the IT people that you need. So, we really are going to advertise these new ones that were announced last week that include the film industry and manufacturing. Well, are those not both very relevant to what you guys are pushing here? So, we're looking at the program mix, and how do we dovetail with those pushes that you guys want to emphasize with the brilliant move from the part of the state to incentivize the behaviors of people to go into those programs, and we're very excited about that. The second big initiative I want to announce is a faculty and staff Paulding Engagement Team. And that's made up of faculty and staff members that live and/or work here in Paulding. They're people that you would bump into the grocery store at the Chamber of Commerce, Friday night at the football games, their children go to school here, they're engaged in Paulding County, and their specific mission is to detail the ways in which we engage with the community. Not a global approach, "I go to a commerce, Chamber of Commerce luncheon." But who's the, what's the detail in terms of the specific person that they will engage with? What's the link? Who specifically is going to own the relationship at the schools, at each of the schools? Who's going to identify, who can name the top 10 employers of the top five manufacturers? And who knows the hiring person there, and what's the relationship? They're charged with that responsibility. It'd be headed by Mrs. Kuzak. I'm going to ask those faculty and staff that are here today to stand, the faculty and staff from Chattanooga Tech. Missy, if you're waiting, folks. Missy is the Executive Director of Admissions and Records at the college, is a high-level position at the college. She should be in charge of that engagement team. The third major initiative I want to announce is a president's community advisory council. I want to sit down and meet with key leaders of the community on a periodic basis and exchange and to have dialogue. And the core of that will be the members of my Board of Trustees and Board of Directors for the college. I have three members of the Board of Directors here today. If you three will stand, Board of Directors Mark Haney, Ty Redstraw, and Stephen Crew. There are several members of the Board of Trustees from Paulding that will be part of that. Don Barber and Jason Manor are here today. They're not here with us today, but they will be the core of my desire to sit down with community leaders and have the dialogue necessary to, yet again, reengage in a very big way, a very personal way, a very direct way, a very targeted way with the Paulding community. Gentlemen, I appreciate very much your desire to have community dialogue with us. We feel as though we are part of what's going on in Paulding. We feel as though we are important to the business and economic development strategies that y'all have in mind. We produce the kinds of people that are being sought by business and industry, and we feel as we make a difference, and we want to be sure you're aware of that and to do everything we can to build on that. Thank you very much.
Well, if you would, let's talk about, you dealt with the driver's licensing.
Yes, sir.
Specifically with CDL licensing. Right now, you have to drive a great distance away to get tested, and I called you and said, "Can you help us out with that?" And can you talk to us a little bit about?
I will. Brenda White, can you come up here, come in? Brenda's been the one that's been working with y'all on that, and it's a great move. As I understand it now, we've got some space on the campus here that is going to be provided to the county for the purpose of testing and teaching. And Brenda, will you fill in the group on West Line?
Good morning. We've been in discussions with DDS and with the Paulding County Government, Chuck Rann in particular. I've been in discussions with, to do a three-way partnership with our campus facility and property, and then the county trying to provide the grading and asphalting of the actual lots, and then DDS trying to provide a building to put there for testing purposes, so that we could have a program at the Paulding campus to train the drivers and then have a testing facility there to get them tested and certified to drive.
Just for the truck?
Yeah, just for the truck driver, yes. The truck driving line would be at our Paulding campus. That's the idea, is still in negotiations, I would say, but that's our goal, is to have that partnership come to fruition sometime in the next year, I would hope.
Thank you. We are eager, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, to have that happen. We think that will be a great asset to be able to say, "I don't understand why we don't." I mean, I've told Jennifer, I almost feel like putting up on a billboard everywhere that truck driving is $70, $150. I mean, for, you can't beat that anywhere. We ought to be training hundreds, if not 1,000, truck drivers as on the top 10 job openings in the state. And wait until one day when the court gets deepened and cargo transfer is quadrupled. Truck drivers are going to be sought after. It's lots of openings and well-paying, so that's a great relationship. I'm proud that we'll get to the day when you guys can brag that's here and some other programs that are here at this campus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call Dr. Kathy Lidbetter, the campus dean, Georgia Highlands College.
Thank you for having us here. I have some updates. The first thing that I'd like to announce is that as of two weeks, we have a new president, Dr. Donald Green, and I'm sure he's going to be able to be pulled into meeting here and be looking to greater strides in community involvement and servicing our students in Paulding County. He comes to us from Ferris State University in Big Rapids, Michigan, and he was outreach VP there and also heavily involved in international programs. He led an expansion of his institution from nine satellite campuses to 19. So, he is very versed with satellite campuses. Highlands has six satellite campuses. His greatest achievements have been in student success, retention, recruitment, diversity, and economic development. So, we're excited to be able to work with him. One of his particular areas was Hispanic, which resulted in sizable growth in enrollment of Hispanics at his former institution. And I know that's going to be some area that he will have particular meaning and movement in. As far as our enrollment, Georgia Highlands College enrolls for this fall 5,485 students. We are down about 2.3% over last year at this time, which is not uncommon in the state. I believe there's only one or two in the university system, 31 institutions are actually up in enrollment. For the Paulding campus, we are down 4% over fall of last year. Fall of last year, we hit, for the first time, 500 students. We had 518 students. So, we're a little under 500 at this term with 486. Like Chat Tech, our online campus is early. We have, we are up 7% across the campus, or across the college with online enrollment. At Paulding campus, we are up to offering 65 classes in just five short years, starting with our first year of offering, I think, 11 courses. We're up to 65 now with 35 different courses. We have recently, this is, I think, our first, this December will be our first graduation of our very first bachelor's degree program in nursing, and it is totally online. And we have, this past year, been approved for a bachelor's degree program to start in dental hygiene. And so, those are our first bachelor degree programs, and we'll be looking at expanding that a bit, depending on what northwest industry, business industry is desiring and demanding. We have approved last, I think it was last month, in August, the university system of Georgia has approved our second 2+2 agreement at the Paulding campus with Kennesaw State University. Our first one has had several graduates over the last few years, is in your early childhood education. Our second one will be in accounting. What that means is that a student can go to a Paulding campus and attend a Paulding campus and receive a two-year degree from Georgia Highlands and then a four-year degree from Kennesaw State, attending at that location. It's expected that two more, 2+2 agreements will follow in this year, one in criminal justice and one in psychology. Also, the two areas that the greatest attention is given, the greatest interest, the greatest demand from both the students and the workforce. As you well know, we have a library at Paulding campus, and it's about a year old now. It's in historic the accounts, and just a few bits of information about it. On a regular basis, the library will see about 100 students every year coming in and using the services there. The adult education group that also is in the courthouse and offering services through its GED and ESL program, they are also using our library and show the tours of the library introduced, the services there, and then they can also access resources. Something that is quite unique is Georgia Highlands in Floyd and now in Paulding owns a 3D printer. This is a pretty big advancement in technology, and you can go and actually watch it in action. It will replicate a three-dimensional object. And you can also, our students and our employees have free access to it, to its use, and the community can come in and reserve its use if they would want to. We have approximately 20 students on the Paulding campus who are dual and enrolled students. They are high school students that attend Georgia Highlands at Paulding at the same time they're juniors and seniors and can receive college credit. There are more students beyond the 20, but they're attending other campuses, particularly the students from the northern part of the county. Some of those opt to go to Cartersville. Let's see. One other area I would like to really boast a little on is very unique to Paulding as well. At our college, we have an organization called B2B. It's a men of color student group organization that gives them opportunity to bond together and get services to be able to be successful in their educational journey. We started in 2012 with six students in this organization at Paulding. It has now grown to 38 students. That's nearly half of the actual men of color population at Paulding. But what I really want us to recognize is the success of this program. These gentlemen came in, that first group, with a 1.282 GPA. They have consistently grown their GPA, currently the group of 38, as a 3.12 GPA. And they, for five consecutive semesters, they have earned the college's recognition of being the most academic, are receiving the academic achievement award over all of the campuses. So, what's happening at Paulding supports this group of young men in very unique ways. And if you know much about what's happening in the United States, men in general, not just men of color, but men in general are becoming fewer and far between, or less and less achieving college degrees. And it's getting to be a very serious national problem. And with problems like this, I think it's something for us to really support and recognize that we are trying to get both men to graduate and have degrees, or the better men of community in our state.
Thank you.
Thank you. The whole idea of being able to grow up here, to school here, get your degrees here, and then turn around and work and raise your family here. Thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for being here, and all that y'all do to support that is a great thing. Awards, number one, discuss actions of purchase of a track loader to the lowest responsible bidder, Bob Cad of Ocala, in the amount of $56,114.
This is a very simple item. We requested quotes for this piece of equipment to be used by our rideaway crew, and the bids or the quote range for most of the highest was just under $1,400. So, they're very close, very competitive, and we're recommending a war to the lady, Bob Cad of Ocala, in the amount of $56,114.
Any questions? Is that four by splash?
No. It didn't budget. It was a budgeted item.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Captain. No reports from committees at departments. It's now part of our public just passed on agenda items. Ms. Malini from Indian Creek Report, new business item number four.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. I wonder allowing you to speak this morning. Here again, I'm here to talk about our airport and what we are doing for our airport. Last week, you approved a intergovernmental agreement that basically gave them control of the sun, the moon, and the stars as it cast over the airport area. Here again, now, we're telling the FAA that the airport is viable. Were they not viable before you gave them that authority? The airport continues to use our tax dollars, and you say that as a county that, let me take a moment to put it respected by a gentleman. take a moment to put it respected by a gentleman that did some Alabama math. Based on the average value of a home in Paulding County, just a number of a hundred thousand dollars, it has an assessed value of seven, an assessed value of forty thousand dollars. The county MNO on that house now becomes two hundred and ninety dollars to support the four hundred thousand dollars that you are giving the airport under this new IGA. Taxes from one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine homes are being used to support what a majority of the people in this room and the last few or number of commissioner meetings are against. I think that is deplorable. You continue to give the money. You approved last week a grant for almost three hundred thousand dollars to pay for an environmental impact study. Are they paying it in addition to the four hundred thousand dollars, or am I, as a county resident, paying that money? They're going to get a new fire station. At what point, who is paying for that? Their four hundred thousand dollars will nowhere come close to paying for that fire station. True, it's being built for the residents on that end of the county, but it's being built because we were told we had to build it where we're building it by the FAA. At some point, we need to recognize that there's a number of county people that are against it. Commissioner Carmichael, as well as Blake Swafford swore they never do fuel dumps, but according to WGA Channel Five in Atlanta, just this weekend, they dumped thousands of gallons of fuel out of airplanes to land one that needed to land here in Hartsfield. Commissioner A., Commissioner C., by this intergovernmental agreement, you have taken away my right to vote against you, gentlemen, in the next election because you are standing so strongly for the airport agreement. You've tied my hands, you've taken away a right that I had to vote for my representation by following through with this IGA and tying our hands for the next ten years. I wish you would all greatly consider what you are doing and do something about controlling the anarchy that is going on at the airport. Thank you.
Mr. Delmar Cook, one fifty-six West Side Circle.
I'm here to, and Joe is going to make us one fine fire chief. He's a fine man, a wonderful person, and I know he's got some big shoes to fill, but I think the very man is very capable of doing, and he's a hell of a nice guy, and I wish him all the best he says. But also here to speak about, I say airport, I'm for the airport, which people know that. And I'm also for the freedom that we have, of God, we are living in a country that we do have the freedom that we have. And if people are against the airport, you have the freedom, the right to do this, to serve the world. I respect your rights and what you think, but I don't like the way you present yourself. You're not acting like ladies and gentlemen. You're good character assassination. I know there was some leader here the other week said something by a commissioner, like a squirrel running across the road or something like that.
We have to stay, stay on topic with number three if you want.
Oh, number three?
That's Mr. Delmar.
About what?
We have to keep you on topic, Ron.
Well, I thought I could say what I look at. Well, how much longer I got to talk about the person? I just want to, I'm just tired of people that commissioners sound on their back, and that's character assassination. And Mr., by now, I got a few words to you. Now, I said to you last week, and Mr. Blake Swafford, I swear to God, you talked him to death, and I don't know how many more questions you've come up with, but he answered them all. And he stood, I know he's not to give up. I think if you're going to stay that long and stand up with him, and you'll see how tired he is. And I know, I'm not saying you're not a good man, but by grace, I think all these people have followed you instead of their son. And if you like, that's all I can say. But I got a lot more I want to say. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Good. There's no, there's no consistent agenda, no old business under new business. Discuss action to approve project framework agreements between Paulding County and the Georgia Department of Transportation concerning project activities and funding to install advanced traffic management systems. Project PI triple-oh-one-three-one-four-seven, that's phase one. Project PI triple-oh-one-three-one-four-eight, that's phase two. Paulding County will contribute, launch funding in the approximate of six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents for phase one, and four hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty cents for phase two. What this does is it takes about 1.121 of our money for the advancement of traffic signaling, and it is compared to 2.6 million in federal funding. Scott and him did such an excellent job, George Jones helped with that, many others did. I think it's an excellent way to benefit from extra money. And what this will do is there's probably in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand hours of congestion that could be eased in our county with this advanced system. It's just basically using technology, and I think the other thing that it does is it reduces emissions. We're in an unattainment county, so we're trying to get towards attainment. We hope this helps work towards that with the number of jobs that we bring here. So Scott, if you'll answer that, I'd appreciate it.
That pretty much covers it.
Thanks, Scott.
I would like to add that we did, we did work very hard with the Atlanta Regional Commission to secure the funding, which is the program congestion mitigation air quality funds that come from our federal fuel taxes that we pay at the pump. We secured that through the Atlanta Regional Commission through our planning efforts and through our master plan that y'all approved two years ago, that this is one of the results of that effort. And now we need to move to the implementation stage, and the implementation arm is handled through Georgia DOT. The Department of Transportation will oversee the actual funds that go to construction, including the engineering phases leading up to that. We have laid out about a three-year schedule to get this project underway once you approve this agreement. It does secure 2.6 million dollars that we would not otherwise have received had it not been for the fact that we took the planning efforts and then the efforts of our professional staff to submit all the requirements to get this funded. So I'm very proud of the efforts of our office. Particularly, I had very little to do with that George Jones and Erica Parrish working with their counterparts have done all the work, and they will manage this project. There are two agreements in this agenda. They're twin projects. They were only split because originally we didn't think we would get both projects. We thought there was very little money that we would actually get out of the overall pot of money that was offered to the, to the region, but we had such a good submittal and such a good payback for our project, we got both of the projects to our surprise, really. And so we have really one project that will be built together. It's, it's got two segments, segments just begin because of the funding, the way it was submitted. So with your approval, we'd greatly like to get this project underway, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
In fact, what y'all got 22% of all the money that was allocated to the ARC for?
For the congestion mitigation pot of funds that they offered in 2013. And I don't think, we have seen an offering, there are many calls for projects in the last 10 years. This is pretty rare now because funding has been so tight with the inflation over the last decade, it has swallowed up the available funding. The decrease in the incoming fuel taxes is a diminishing source of funds, as y'all have probably heard about, and it's very, very competitive to bring this money back. So I'm very proud to bring this to you. It is a new type of project for us as well. We've done a lot of things to upgrade our signal systems individually and have attempted some responsive systems, but this brings it to a whole new level. This, this outlines a program where we will link about 70% of our signals in this county and be able to communicate back to a central center so that if we get a call, we can look at it before we even dispatch a crew to the site. So we can, we can save money in many cases just by fixing the signal from the office. The benefit also is the data we get out of this system will allow us to make our signal timing much more efficient and responsive to that actual traffic conditions by having additional monitoring capability, traffic counters, detection devices that will sense what is happening out there, and then we will adjust the time so that we're not wasting 10 seconds, 20, 30 seconds at every signal we stop that, we're looking at nothing happening. That's one of the most frustrating things we have. We don't maintain all the signals, not yet. Eventually, the architecture will allow us to do that, but we often get the calls regardless, and we can look at these signals and we can call them into the state and ask them to respond, but we, we will be very much in control as far as being able to take, take our system and react to the conditions that change and serve our citizens with a better traffic flow.
You said the state would oversee this, but in reality, we'll do the construction submittal, the state just processes the paperwork. Is that correct?
Correct. We're, we're doing all the real work, the, the legwork. There, there's more of an audit process from the state's side with spending the money, but they do look at all of our reports and plans along the way to make sure they meet their requirements for this funding type. It's very similar to the way we constructed the East Arm Parkway, same type of agreement. That was a widening project, multimillion dollar widening project. What we're doing here is we're not building any asphalt. This is all technology to move traffic. You could take this entire pot of money and not be able to, be able to build a mile of road, but we're going to be able to impact 20, 30, 40 miles of roadway operations with this amount of money. So there's a huge payback multiplied by every vehicle that passes through these interstate.
Do you add components to individual lights? Are there new technological components that go on the lights and then are sent back to the control center?
Yes, sir. What we will do, the fiber optic system adds that two-way communication ability to the signals. It allows very rapid information exchange. It allows us to take the detection of those vehicles. Additional monitoring we will add, not just at the signal itself, but leading up to the signal. So if you have a car quarter mile away or a platoon of cars coming a quarter mile away as they get close to that signal, that signal knows what to expect when that platoon of cars gets there, and with that additional monitoring, which we couldn't do on a system basis without having these fiber optic networks put in. You can do that individually with additional monitoring, but it's, it's, we're solving all of those issues at the same time.
You mentioned you're doing this through the ARC. Everybody understands we're in the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, but for transportation planning, you do this with the Atlanta Regional Commission?
That's, that's correct because we are part of the commute to Atlanta. As you know, many of our citizens go to Cobb, Paulding, Douglas for jobs, and until we change that, we are going to be part parcel of the pollution issues in the overall region. And even if we are on the lesser side of that, or we're upwind for the most part, we are destined, our destiny and our funding for transportation must come through the Atlanta Regional Commission for transportation dollars. We are planning a, we have our own planning group with Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, but our transportation component of it must come through the Atlanta Regional Commission by law.
I think you said this, Scott, but what's the, what's the timeline of phase one and phase two in sports?
The schedule is to make it to construction within three years. This is not a huge project in terms of construction. It's probably getting there is a lot more difficult than actually constructing it once we do. So we're looking at the three-year schedule, and we've built some, some float in there because there are a lot of hoops we still need to jump through, but it's not like knocking down trees and impacting streams and whatnots and things like that. So it'll be much more streamlined, we hope, than, than a more difficult project like a widening project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to point out that if you look across this table and the people in the audience, we've got some of the finest staff in the state of Georgia, probably in the U.S. So I just want to thank y'all for all of you did this. Great job. Number two, discuss action on entering to an engineering services agreement with Brown and Caldwell for program management services in support of Richland Creek Reservoir Project in the amount of $2 million, $400,000. Michael Carter, and then, Michael, I believe you have some guests here today to work with you on the presentation.
We do, and yes, this is for the overall management of the, the Richland Creek Water Supply Program, which includes reservoir, river intake and pump station, raw water pipeline, water treatment plant, and all of the improvements to the, the water distribution system. Really, it's everything that's needed in order to deliver water from, to the customer from this project. The program management services contract is a service-based contract that will provide overall management, procurement, delivery, and integration of various pieces of the program in our permanent water system operations. Brown and Caldwell will serve as, as, as the owner's agent on, on this project. It's a four-year contract that's, that's being set up with yearly budgeting requests being brought back to you each year for your approval. First year's budget request is 2.4 million. Brown and Caldwell staff are here today to give you a short presentation on the scope of work. Have Kelly Donstock and Janine Giaruso, Mark Lethbridge, did you make it? Kelly and Mark are collectively leading the team, and Janine is, is providing the support services on the public engagement side. So with that, I'm, I'm going to turn that over to them to, to let them talk a little bit about their services.
Thank you, Michael. Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to come in here today and speak with you about the Richland Creek Program. This fall will be the culmination of a decade's work and permitting work that the county's been undergoing with advancement of this new, new program. And we anticipate the Section 404 permit to be issued late this fall, which will allow the program to move into the procurement and execution phases. This project will establish the ability of Paulding County to produce its own drinking water. Right now, Paulding receives all of its water from Cobb County Maritime Water Authority through Lake Alatuna, their wholesale customer, two down. Their allocation in Lake Alatuna has been questioned and has been fought as part of the Tri-State Water Wars. Alabama has contested the allocation that they have, so it's by note means permanent in the long term. So this establishes a permanent source of water for Paulding County and also establishes the ability for you to control your long-term rates in terms of your costs. This project is called an offline pump storage reservoir. It's an off-peak demand system, which means you'll be pumping out of the Etowah River downstream of, of the dam, and you can coordinate your pumping out of the river with power releases as well as high-flow conditions within the river. So there's no downstream impact. Alabama has spoken out in favor of this project, so it's seen as a regional supply solution not only for Paulding County, but for the state of Georgia and potentially a part of the solution of the Tri-State Water Wars. The program itself is made up of five distinct elements, was discussed briefly by Mr. Carter. The dam and reservoir, which will be a new 305-acre reservoir located in the northern part of Paulding County, right up against the Barco County line. A new intake that's located on the Etowah River, a raw water pipeline that conveys water from the river to the reservoir, and a new water treatment plant that's going to be located at the reservoir site. Since this is located in the northern part of the county, there will have to be additional conveyance to bring the water down to the southern part of the county and add some of the distribution system improvements that will take place. The procurement of the various components of, and elements of this program will be dependent upon the right way to minimize components of, and elements of this program will be dependent upon the right way to minimize risk for Paulding County, to get the best price, establish the cost upfront, and be able to maintain the overall schedule. And there's, depending on what the component is, it's going to be procured in various means. Some of the components will be procured using a traditional design-bid-build approach, where you hire an engineer as a county, then they design it, you put it out for bid, and then award it to a contractor. Other elements will be done using alternative delivery, looking at design-build, where you will hire an engineer and contractor team that will do some of the work. And then some of the elements will be done using a construction-management-at-risk approach. All of those are balanced to make sure that you're able to minimize your risk, to reduce the upfront capital cost, and know exactly what the cost is going to be early on in the process. And in critical components like the water treatment plant, it gives the county the ability to give input so that your staff will have the ability to really drive the quality of the end product that's there. Something to point out, and I apologize for the small font, but there's a lot of activities there. A lot of activity will occur in parallel, design and construction of the reservoir, the plant, the intakes, the pipeline. It's all going to happen in parallel together. It'll happen over approximately a four-year period with everything coming online just prior to 2019. All of these individual projects are related as part of the program. For example, when the reservoir's complete and it's time to fill it up, you need to make sure that the intake's online. And if there's a pipeline there to be able to convey water to the reservoir to allow it to fill. If there's a delay in any one of those project components, it's going to affect the overall program. That's one of the reasons it's good to have a program manager to manage all of these concurrent and parallel activities that take place. So the overall scope and role of the program manager for Paulding County is in five key areas: providing project management, coordination and execution of all of the individual projects that make up the program; providing financial analysis and management; providing staff augmentation as needed during the period of the program; providing utility performance services; and providing stakeholder communication and education. I'm going to briefly touch on the first four of these elements, and then I'm going to turn it over to Janine, who's going to focus on the stakeholder communication and education component. With all of the various designs that have to take place and the various construction activities that happen in parallel, there's a tremendous amount of work that takes place in this program. You have to review thousands and thousands of design pages, drawings, and documents. You have to provide input on areas that are important to the county. You also have to review shot drawings and provide construction inspection on all of the parallel construction projects. It's very taxing, and the county does not have the manpower in place to be able to manage all of this work on top of their normal duties that they have. In addition, there's coordination that has to take place with the state from a permitting perspective, from the safe dams and the drinking water program. Although you'll have the Corps of Engineers Section 404 permit, other facilities will have to be, like the reservoir will have to be permitted, and the water treatment plant will have to be permitted as well. Additionally, some of the funding source comes through GIFA, so there'll be coordination that occurs with them as well. So the role of the program manager is to act as an extension of the county staff and be your agent in reviewing all of these designs and overseeing the construction of these programs and then interfacing with regulators in the overall project, providing you the extension of capabilities necessary to manage the project to coordinate and successfully execute all of these program components. From a financial perspective, the program's anticipated to cost on the order of $100 to $160 million, depending upon the size of the water treatment plant that's implemented. Because this is a regional solution for the state, there's been a lot of interest in trying to get Paulding to move forward quickly in terms of getting additional capacity. So initially, Paulding was contemplating a 5-MGD capacity. The state is actually pushing to get a higher and higher capacity in place. And they're looking at the potential of providing direct, state-direct investment, which is basically free money to force that to happen quicker than would normally be provided by Paulding County. What that does is it pulls allocation off of Lake Allotuna and allows Paulding to develop a more, a better rate structure long-term. So this is a very good thing. So from a financial management perspective, we'll work with the county and try to maximize the state-direct investment that's given to the project. About $50 million has also already been allocated for the project through GIFA low-interest loans. And the difference of any that will be required will need to be done through the usage of utility bonds. Routh Talis Financial is our partner on the program management team, and they've already provided some consulting to the program and will continue to do so during the program management and help you develop and execute the best approach in terms of funding the overall program. From a staff augmentation perspective, our team will allow Paulding County to have access to top technical talent as needed for all aspects of the program. We're an organization of over 1,500 engineers from across the country, and we can provide specific design expertise as needed so that on your side of the table, you have top talent in any aspect of the design or implementation. Construction, there'll be a lot of activities that are taking place, and we'll provide construction inspectors to make sure that the work that is being put in place is of the highest quality and is directed by the standards developed with Paulding County. We also have operators on staff. You currently do not have water treatment operators. That'll be part of your change for your organization. You'll be hiring those people through the execution of the program. But during the design process, our operations staff will review things from the perspective of the operator, making sure there's enough room to work, making sure that there's enough flexibility in the design to be able to optimize the facility once it's up and running. We'll also provide staff augmentation in the area of management consulting. You're going to be transforming from a water supplier from just a wholesale perspective to where you'll now have laboratory staff working on the water site. You'll now have compliance staff working on the water site. You'll also have public relations staff dealing with calls in terms of water quality, et cetera. So the structure of that will require sort of new, a new organization within your water department. And our management consulting will help you design the proper organizational structure. Our job will be to work in the county's best interest. We are going to be your agent in the execution of this program, and we will manage all of the program elements to your high level of satisfaction. One of the things that we do is we bring the outside perspective of hundreds of similar utilities throughout the United States. So we can help you implement best practices that we've learned from all of those different utilities, especially when you're designing the new structure of your department.
This is not your first rodeo?
No, definitely not. We've actually done this exact same thing in Aguinet County. We helped them manage a $2 billion capital improvements program, as well as Rockdale County when they developed the brand new water supply source. So we've done a lot in the region, and we've done a lot across the country. When looking at utility performance services, you're in a very unique situation here. You're about to build a new utility or a component of your utility, and you have the opportunity to make it a world-class utility. Thinking like a business, identifying the proper structure will help you do that, making sure you're business-oriented, that the culture you instill is business-oriented, that you're efficient, and you do things in a reliable operational perspective. You're going to have to hire and train some new staff, and we'll play a heavy role in that, helping you identify the right requirements and making sure that your staff, current and new, is appropriately trained to run these new facilities. We'll also help you implement the proper business systems so that you run efficiently and that you can minimize the amount of manpower and really work towards a highly automated system. During the startup and commissioning phase of this project, out in late 2018 and 2019, that's the timeframe with highest risk for this project. Contractors and engineers, they want to be done with the project and move on to their next project. But that's just when the county staff is really taking over ownership and running these facilities. So we'll pay special attention during this period, making sure that you're properly trained. We have operators on staff that can work hand-in-hand with your staff. And we can be seen almost as like a pair of training wheels, that if during the end of the project, they're still not 100% ready to run everything, we can be there holding their hand a month or two after the contractors and engineers have all left the program to make sure that your staff is up to speed and running the facilities efficiently. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Janine to talk about stakeholder communication.
Morning.
Good morning.
So as Michael Carter and Kelly have described, this is going to be a great project. And right out of the gate, we want all the interested stakeholders to get that message and to understand that. And we want them to get the information quickly. And we will also want to make sure that if there are any questions coming from the various stakeholders, that they get accurate information in a timely manner. So as many of you know, I've been working with you to develop a stakeholder communication and education plan. And as part of that, we identified who are the stakeholders, who are those people who are interested and will be interested in what's going on, and who can also be our partners in spreading that information and message. So we identified those stakeholders. We laid out on the table what are those potential concerns, what are the potential interested, those points of interest with each of those stakeholders. We also identified what are those messages, what are those response messages that we want to provide in answer to those questions. We talked about the different communication materials that we can use, and I'll show some of those in a minute, that we can use to help spread the information and message. We talked about how to get that information to people through meetings, through websites, through informational brochures. And then we also talked about the frequency, how often we need to be establishing those communications. So we've developed and we're working on finalizing this plan. As part of the program manager role, we would help you implement that plan. We would take those identified communication materials, make sure that they're provided to the stakeholders in the right timeframe, and then we'll also take ownership of questions. So in terms of looking at what are some of those communication materials, we've identified so far. And you can see there on the right, the Richland Creek Reservoir. That's a logo that is almost finalized. We've got a tagline associated with that, "Water for Today and Tomorrow." The idea is that logo and that tagline would be provided on all the communication materials, so it becomes a very visible and recognizable project. We've secured a website, rcrwater.com. It's not fully populated yet. If you went there, it would say it's under construction at the moment. But the idea is that is one of those communication materials to, that the public can go to, that any stakeholder could go to and get concise, accurate information about what's going on. There would be a homepage. There would be frequently asked questions. We would also provide photographs and informational updates as the project unfolded and different construction phases were taking place. We would provide those summaries on that website. So again, it's a focused place to get information. We would be helping facilitate different public meetings, again, to help inform the public and the citizens of the community of what is going on. We've developed these frequently asked questions. Again, I mentioned some of the, we brainstormed what stakeholders are interested in hearing about. So those frequently asked questions is a single page, front and back, with those questions listed out and what the response messages are. We've developed information kits. These can be provided to commissioners, to schools, to the media, to neighboring jurisdictions. And within those kits, again, are concise, consolidated information, frequently asked questions, a map of the project site, where to go for more information. Through the website, people would be able to sign up for, or different organizational groups would be able to sign up for and request a speaker to come and present and provide, again, provide information about what's going on in the project. As Kelly mentioned, we'll have a lot of consultants and contractors and different people working on the project. A great way to help streamline communications and get people focused on the key messages is to develop these project business cards or brochures, if you will. Again, staff keep them on their person so that if they're asked a question, they can provide that timely information and concise information. And then, of course, we have listed a groundbreaking ceremony. As we get to that point, as this becomes finalized, a wonderful way to help celebrate it is to have a groundbreaking ceremony and invite the community, invite the members who've been understanding and partaking in it all along. So in addition to distributing those communication materials and keeping on top of those communications, as I mentioned before, we're also going to be having a lot of contractors and consultants. And one of our key goals here is to provide accurate information and timely information in response to questions. And so that working team, the contractors and consultants and everyone working on the program, would get trained on what they can and cannot say. And by they cannot say, meaning that there are a lot of questions that they might be asked that they can respond to. But there are some questions that really takes that bigger picture person, and so they might not be the appropriate person to respond at that moment. So we want to make sure that everybody's clear on the information that they're knowledgeable about and what they're not 100% knowledgeable about, so we can, again, provide accurate information in response to those public questions. And then finally, too, as part of the website, there's a place where the stakeholder can go in and put a question in, where there will be a phone number that they might want to call and ask a question. As part of the program manager role, we would be that front line of communication to respond to those questions. We also would know which questions we would need to bring back to the county and to have that dialogue so that we would know how to respond in a timely manner. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions for either Kelly or myself, and maybe help me respond.
Well, this has been Governor Bill's probably number-one project in the state, as he's going in and focused on the water wars with Alabama and Florida. He's taken a particular interest. In fact, he was here in our county last Friday and mentioned in his comments about the Richland Creek Reservoir, to the point that they've put money behind this. There's another $39 million that's coming available that would be allocated of Paulding that wouldn't be part of GIFA or any other bonds that we have. And it was his initiative to build several reservoirs, this being probably one of the first. So I commend him for being here and talking about the Richland Creek Reservoir. And Michael, Carter, and Mike Dunlop, I can't thank you enough for all the hard work that y'all have put into this. This has been, in words, for me, for six years. But I know for y'all, it's been a much longer period of time. So thank you for your dedication. Now, do y'all have questions of the consultant or Mike?
Did you say, okay, Tommy, did you say Wemette County and Rockdale?
Yeah, in terms of a program management role on a, basically, a drinking water side of things. Brown and Caldwell led those two program management roles. But we've been involved with several other similar, similar large capital projects for Fulton County and others as well.
So ours is 60, what's the acreage of ours?
305-acre reservoir.
650 acres landmass, 850 acres.
Yeah.
And those others that you did, were they about the same size? And how long did they take?
Similar timeframe. Most of the large capital improvement programs like this are on this order. You know, you're talking about four years or so for implementation. In terms of size, it really varies. You actually have a very large water volume based on your production rate compared to a lot of, a lot of the other systems, which is good from a water quality perspective as well. Some utilities that pull directly off of the river, like the city of Atlanta, they'll see turbidity levels when it rains go from, you know, 5 to 1,000. So they have to spend a lot of money in chemicals and treatment. With the larger reservoir size that you have, you'll have a better water quality coming in, which means your cost of treatment, the cost of treatment is lower, and you have a lot more reliability and redundancy during an extreme drought period. You've got a very tight storage.
Way more for me. In 2019, we filled the reservoir up. Do we have the opportunity to market the water ourselves, or is that up to GIFA or the state?
In terms of marketing to other jurisdictions or?
Yes, sir.
Let me answer. As far as, as far as water goes on this project, right now, it's being designed for Paulding County. This is our project. The state's interest in this project is 100% to get us off of Lake Allotuna. That's what they want. They want us to be self-sufficient. So everything that, the full entire yield of this project, regardless of state investment, is for Paulding County. It's not for another jurisdiction.
Because things that, as I've repeated several times, take care of, we've met with you guys, Kelly, now, but for Cobb, for us to get off Cobb's water, they need us to get off their water. It helps them tremendously with their growth, with their forecasting, because they're in the mobile basin, we're in the Sabana basin.
Well, as going, as going through this, you mentioned getting off of Cobb County. Cobb County's water supply around Lake Allotuna, Cobb has been asking for additional allocation out of Lake Allotuna for 30 some odd years. They still do not have an answer to that question for the quarter. That decision has yet to be made. And there's nothing in the future that says it's going to be made. So Cobb is, Cobb is limited. We have, they have adequate capacity to service. Everybody has it is right now. But moving on to the future as we continue to grow, we've got to secure our own.
Yes. The national reason we're looking at 75, we're going to go into a bigger.
Right.
That is definitely accelerate the process of Paulding County providing 100% of its own water.
One of the things that you'll see that happen, you mentioned earlier, Routh Talis did financial modeling. And what we did with that, we took all the supportive commissioners so that three of us wouldn't be in the meeting at the same time, two at a time. And we took our incoming commissioners, Tony Crowe and Vernie Collette. our incoming commissioners, Tony Crowe and Vernon Collette, and brought them in to hear this presentation to say, if we absolutely did nothing, how much money do we have invested if we continue to buy money from, buy water from Cobb Marietta? And in 30 years, if we built this system, and they're talking up to 150, 160 million, we'll have close to the same amount of money, probably more invested, if we do absolutely nothing. So, you know, this is for our kids and our grandkids and their kids, what we do. And also, it is huge when a governor can say, we went and built this reservoir to help with the water wars with Alabama and Florida. It helps a tremendous amount, and it does give relief to Cobb Marietta and what they're trying to do. So it's huge. It's for the entire southeast, and it's just a big, big project.
I would like to say thanks to Michael Carter, because we have, over the last few weeks, had several meetings, two commissioners at a time. We brought the, like Chairman said, Mr. Collette, Mr. Crowe in, and we gave them a lot of information. We spent a lot of time on that, emailed out information. So I appreciate you making sure that all of us are kept in the loop on the project that the citizens voted for in 1999, and we're moving forward to do today. So I commend your board, your staff, and I thank the board of commissioners for working together on the project.
I've got some questions about the contract that we're voting on today. It is a four-year contract. We are voting to, we're voting on two things. One, the funding for the four-year contract. Second thing is to fund the first initial year, which it is a pay-by-services contract. It's limited to, for the first year, to 2.4 million dollars. If demand is more than that, even more than that, will be brought back to the commissioners, right?
Yes, correct. It's, it's an hourly-based contract. They bill for whatever hours that they expend on the project on the monthly basis, and we've paid in accordance to. Built into the $2.4 million, there's actually $2.1 of direct labor cost. And then we have $150,000 added to it for expenses, primarily because they're going to have, they're going to need to set up an office somewhere here in Paulding County to manage this project. And then we have $150,000 contingency for the remainder of the unification.
Right. Now, and then each year, in other words, this time next year, it'd be part of the contract, the contract update that you will vote on the funding for the next year.
Correct. Yes. It's funded on a yearly basis. What we're voting on right now is to hire Brown and Caldwell to provide these program management services throughout the life of the contract. Obviously, we don't want to change orders ever, considering that we can't, we can't 100% define every little piece and aspect of what their scope of service is going to be. That's reason to revisit this, this funding on a yearly basis.
Okay. Now, as far as them serving as the program manager, we'll have many different engineers, but as, as the program manager, then they are giving up the right to do any, for instance, designing the water intake or designing the treatment plant. This is the only part that they feel allowed to do.
All that they can do on this project is manage the project for us. They are, in a sense, managing the project specifically for Paulding County. They have no interest in the design itself or no vested interest. They're not doing the design themselves. In doing the reservoir proposals, we specifically excluded them from any other piece of the project other than just overall management.
To simplify, it's like when we built East Town Parkway and Scott hired which company to provide construction inspection. I mean, you hired these additional people for this project?
There will, there will still be additional construction inspection related to each specific design that each engineer will still handle. It's their job to ensure that the design is built to our standards and the project is delivered to our.